You can go ahead.
Thank you, Jay. Good evening. It is 6:01 PM, April 21, 2020. This is Mayor Rich Landsberg, City of Woodland. I would like to make clear for the record of this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that this city council meeting of April 21, 2020, of the Woodland City Council will be conducted pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N-29-20. This meeting will be held via teleconference, and council members will participate via teleconference. Those locations are not listed on the agenda and are not accessible to the general public. The public is encouraged to listen to the city council meeting live on Woodland TV Channel 20, and also by going to the City of Woodland website at wwwcityofwoodland.org/meetings. A member of the public wishes to make a comment during the general public comment or on a specific item. There are two ways to do that tonight. First, members of the public were invited to leave a voicemail message at 530-661-5900. All voicemail messages received by 6:00 PM today will be played during the city council meeting and read into the records at the appropriate time. Any member of the public wishing or watching the livestream who wishes to make a comment on an item as it is being heard may submit an email to the city clerk at councilmeetings@cityofwoodland.org prior to the public comment on that item. Email comments submitted to be read into the record shall be no more in three minutes when read aloud. Please include the agenda item on the subject line. Madam Clerk, at this point, will you please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Barajas?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez? Mayor Landsberg?
I hear.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Stalard?
Here.
Thank you. I would now like to request that each member of the council respond to these questions. Mayor Pro Tem Stalard, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Councilmember Barajas, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez, can you hear me well? Councilmember Rodriguez, can you hear me well?
Yes, I can hear you, Anna.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Thank you. And does each member of the council have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Stalard, Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, have you posted tonight's agenda at a location reasonably accessible to the public?
Yes.
Thank you. Records should reflect then that all council members are present for this teleconference and have indicated they are able to hear the proceedings. At this time, I'm requesting that other city officials introduce themselves, their positions, so that the record can reflect their attendance, starting with our city manager, Ken Hyatt.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Ken Hyatt is present.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Kara Uweta, city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Anna Gonzalez, city clerk.
And Mayor, I also recognize we have additional staff members available on the call as well. We have Derek Caff, police chief, Eric Zane, fire chief, Christine Angle, community services director, Craig Locke, public works director, Brent Meyer, our acting community development director, Kim McKinney, finance officer, Greta Galindo, librarian, as well as Scott Salin, our IT manager, are all available. And if you have questions.
Thank you, city manager. Now, as we go through tonight's agenda, I would like to request that before you should identify yourself each time you speak. For example, this is Councilmember Barajas, et cetera. That the individuals will speak, and please don't interrupt. I would also ask that, to the greatest extent possible, you can mute your phones or devices that we don't get unnecessary ground noise. I would also like to advise all city council members and the city clerk that any votes taken during this teleconference portion of this meeting must be taken by roll call. Madam Clerk, take that role, Brittany, and all voice votes. Now we'll begin with the pledge or the agenda, starting with the pledge of allegiance. If I could have Councilman Fernandez, please lead us to the pledge.
Ready, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
for which it stands,
one nation,
one nation,
under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all,
Thank you, Councilmember Barajas. At this time, we're moving to item D, public comment. Madam Clerk, have you received comments by voicemail that can be played into the record?
No, no voicemails.
Before you proceed, may I ask our IT tech a question? My, 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 uh, my audio is sporadic. Is it me or is it the night's?
I think it's because there's a few other people who are not on mute.
Okay. We're also going to invite a few people to mute at this point. Thank you. Madam Clerk, since the council chambers are closed, can you please read into the record the public comments you received by voicemail?
Yes, I don't have any comments received by voicemail, but I do have one email.
I proceed with the email.
Okay, it's to members of the Woodland City Council from Meg Stalard, President Yolo Community Foundation Board, regarding the Big Day of Giving 2020 proclamation. Friends, today I am here to address you about the Big Day of Giving proclamation on your agenda. But first, I want to thank you so very much for the leadership you have shown in participating in the Yolo County COVID-19 Relief Initiative Fund. These monies will be critically important to the residents of our cities and county during this time of social and economic upheaval. And in the months that follow, they will support the area nonprofits that serve our most vulnerable residents of all ages and from all walks of life. The partnership between Yolo County, the cities of Woodland, Davis, Winters, and West Sacramento, and others with the help of the Yolo Community Foundation, will ensure that the funds are allocated fairly and efficiently throughout the county. We appreciate Woodland and the other cities for their financial contributions to the fund established by Yolo County, and we are grateful for any additional contributions that come from other organizations and/or individuals to support this effort. May 7 is the Big Day of Giving, a day where people from throughout the region and beyond are encouraged to donate online to the nonprofit profits of their choice. I've been present at your meeting in the past to receive your proclamation and support of the day. This year is different for all of us, but it is more important than ever that we give as much as we can. Individuals are strongly encouraged to donate directly to the nonprofits that they have given to in the past and to consider donating to other nonprofits that they know are doing important work in our communities. There are over 60 nonprofits in Yolo County participating this year. They can be reached for at www.bigdayofgiving.org by type of activity, mission, and/or zip code. Thanks for your support of the Big Day of Giving, which is more important for our communities than ever this year. And thanks again for your support of the Countywide Relief Fund. That's the end.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any other emails?
No.
Thank you. We're going to move to item E, and that's council and staff statements. I'm going to begin with Mayor Pro Tem Tom Stalard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only two items tonight. The Woodland Davis Clean Water Agency held its meeting by WebEx recently. I'm pleased to announce that the long issue of taxation of our water right has been resolved with the consequent savings of $200,000 a year. So I'm very pleased about that. We're also operating actually a bit under budget, so we think we're about 5% down. So I want to compliment Tim Bush, who is our executive director of that Joint Powers Authority, and happy for all of us. Also, of course, even in these difficult times, water supply is a critical issue, and so it's on lockdown also as well over there. But there have been no issues, so that's all to the good. Also, yesterday, I participated along with the city manager in a conference call with the Wood, sponsored by the Woodland Chamber of Commerce. The purpose of it was to reach out to the business community and hear what's going on for them. So we heard from a woman who owns a fitness organization. We heard from a man who owns a jewelry store and a third business involving putting wraps on vehicles and things of that sort. All of them were experiencing significant stress, numerous layoffs. Two of the businesses essentially laid off almost everybody. And a real difficult time. And even though we're all very hopeful about federal, the federal relief money, the funds dried up, and none of these three people had received any of the federal relief money. So that's a concern to me, is how do we equitably ensure that people are being given the opportunity to save their businesses? So it was a listening session, and it was a good session. And I think the chamber will continue to do everything it can to provide support for our businesses. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Stalard. Moving now to Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, we, the Yolo Community Foundation met the teleconference to kick off the COVID-19 relief fund initiative. So very grateful for that effort, and as we know, we have that item designated to the Big Day of Giving. And so what I mainly want to point out here is that is as one of the members, along with other Yolo County leaders, we are going to push for folks to donate to the community foundation, but also to other organizations out there that are in need of funding. And we hope to, if I remember correctly, be able to designate and vote on funding for, to support organizations. Sorry, there's like, it was in front of me, to support organizations before the end of April. And we know that this is a timely issue. So we have a good team on board and very thankful for the membership and the leadership on that end. And then yesterday, we, the Yolo Habitat Conservancy met, and we voted on tasking, taking the responsibility of the Yolo Habitat Conservancy and folding it into the county administrator's office, giving the cut to the budget and giving the communication that city managers have sent to JPAs to to cut funding due to the impact of this pandemic. And so hoping to, you know, pick up that conversation later down the road as we make the switch from having administration and executive director tasked with this responsibility, and now it moving on to the Yolo County Administrator's Office. And that is it on my end. Thank you very much. Oh, one last thing. I just, I want to thank staff and code enforcement, Minnie Garcia and city manager for the quick response on inquiries that have come in by email on code enforcement issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Barajas?
Thank you, Mayor Landsberg. Yeah, I just have a few things. I'm also serving on the Yolo COVID-19 initiative. And I'm on the Leadership Advisory Group regarding the initiative. So we're just making a push to have individuals from our community be able to donate directly to nonprofits or the community fund. So I'm encouraging all the council members to use their contacts and to help out. We're just trying to drive as much funding as we can in the next couple of months and establish relationships between community members who want to donate to these awesome and very important nonprofits in our community. In addition to that, I look forward to having a conversation with the council regarding our community block grants regarding how we're going to be able to spend some of that money for underserved population. And I also spent some of my week communicating directly with nonprofits who support farm workers and undocumented families, so that way they can look for resources and grants to be able to serve this underserved population and community. And I just want to thank staff that is going to work day in, day out, ensuring that our city services are adequate for our residents in Woodland during this crisis. And kudos to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Landsberg. Nothing significant from me. I do just want to thank staff, though, for their diligence during this period, as well as both councilmembers Barajas and Rodriguez for their service on the COVID-19 Crisis Committee. And Mayor Landsberg as well, I just want to thank you for your strong leadership during this time. It's good to have a nice, strong voice for our community and who's keeping everyone focused on, you know, the crisis at hand and staying optimistic as we move forward. So thank you.
Mayor Landsberg? I'm back. I keep losing signal here. Am I back on?
Yeah, you're back on.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Fernandez, for your comments. I too want to thank Councilmember Rodriguez and Councilmember Barajas for working on the Community Fund Leadership Group. You're going to represent our city well in that arena. I also want to, as we continue shelter in, I recognize the difficulties that many of us are faced with in our economic situation and our housing situation. And these situations is not but I also see the light at the end of the tunnel here. I don't know about if you share that with me, but I see some light coming up. It's because of the efforts that our community has made containing this pandemic. So stay with it. I asked the community to be patient and with us, stand by us as we move forward. We'll get better soon. I wouldn't want to see us rush into things. As you know, there's people out there that want to hurry up this, go from red light to green light. I don't think it's a good idea. Let's not rush into things. Let's make this thing move forward at the pace it needs to be at. That's it on that issue. I also wanted to thank a member of our community. His name is Jeff Smith. I'm going to hold up a check. He dropped off at my office. This is 20% of the $1,200 that he got from the federal government to donate to City of Woodland for our COVID-19 efforts. It's going to be turned over to the F.I.R.E. folks for proper dispersment and aiding our city. I want to thank Jeff Smith for his donation. Thank you so much. That's all I have at this point. Mr. City Manager.
Rich, could I add one more thing, please?
Sure.
I didn't mention it, but this issue of traffic calming is still needs attention in our community. About a year ago, we've made some decisions but deferred others. I would like to ask staff to please put some better effort into that issue again. It's not necessarily a problem everywhere in the community, but in the older neighborhoods, which are partially part of the first and second district, excuse me, the second district. We have a lot of situations where people are avoiding the arterials for the internal streets and speeding on them. So it's quite a concern to our residents, and even though it isn't perhaps the greatest issue facing us at this moment, I would be grateful if the city would re-energize this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Hyatt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'll leave most of my updates for both the budget item later on, as well as the COVID, since most of the attention the city is focused on those two. Relative to the long-range calendar, though, you'll notice that we do have a week off finally next week. The next council meeting will be May 5. And the highlight of the council calendar every year, of course, is a presentation from the Mosquito Vector Control District. So Gary Goodman will give a brief presentation this year. And then really, the highlight of the May 5 meeting honestly will be a presentation on the capital budget, as well as the measure F and measure J spending plan. So that will be a follow-on from tonight's budget presentation. And then May 19 will be the next meeting. Currently, we show the Research and Technology Park specific plan being presented and introduced to the council that night. Unfortunately, that's going to slip into June. But Councilmember Stalard just requested an update and re-energizing the efforts around traffic calming. So I am working with staff to bring forward on May 19 update on the traffic calming efforts that we've had and take some feedback that we got from the Infrastructure Committee, Barajas and Fernandez, to bring back an update to the traffic calming program and outline for the council how we're going to move forward with implementing traffic calming. We will also continue all the way through the balance of this fiscal year with a budget item every meeting. So on the 19th, we will actually be presenting budget recommendations to balance budgets. I will be seeking council feedback on those recommendations and then following on at the June 2 meeting with a proposed budget. And then lastly, not on the long range yet, but we will be adding an item to the council discuss filling of the vacancy for Councilmember Barajas's seat, which will be coming forward next year. And so Barajas will be communicating with us relative to his intentions to tender his resignation, and then that will help inform the council's options moving forward for filling that vacancy seat. So that concludes my remarks, Mayor. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Somebody's really shuffling a bunch of papers. If it's you, can you mute, please? We're going to move to item F, the consent calendar. It looks like I'm dead again. Hold on. Am I back on?
Yes, Mayor, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Moving to item F, the consent calendar. Items F2 through F7. Is there a member of the council who wishes to pull or discuss any of the items through F7?
Happy to move, Stalard, happy to move the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Hearing no comments or questions, we're going to, and a motion by council.
Our second, Barajas.
Seconded by Councilmember Barajas. Madam Clerk?
Yes, I will now take a roll call vote. Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Landsberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Stalard?
Yes.
Thank you. Consent calendar passes on a 5-0 vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to item G, report to the city manager, starting with item G8, the Yolo COVID-19 update.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So this week's update on COVID will be fairly short. A lot of the kittens and energy focused around understanding and mitigating the health impacts of the COVID pandemic have started to shift over the last week towards what will a slow rollback of the shelter in place orders look like, including recent communications with the county and county health office regarding if we were to incrementally begin to open up our economy again, what types of businesses would we like to see the county health officer address? And how would we like to see those, you know, businesses integrated into the new health order? So over the course, I believe, of the next week, with information we expect out of the governor's office, followed on by more directives out of the county health office, we will be, you know, providing more direction to the community as to when they can expect these rollbacks to occur and what they will look like. These rollbacks will also affect our city operations. So we anticipate, as these rollbacks occur, that the county health officer will allow the city to begin to re-engage with the public at its public counters. So we'll be looking at how to protect not just the public, but our staff and allow incrementally some of that public engagement at our counters begin to occur, as well as potentially even some limited recreational programming. So stay tuned as we learn more as to what that might look like. Rest assured that we are in close communication with the county on that, and we'll provide you and the community updates as we learn more. Relative to the countywide dashboard, for those that don't check it on a daily basis, we do now have 146 confirmed COVID cases throughout Yolo County, of which 74 are in our community here. The majority of those 74 continue to be isolated at the care facility here in the community. We do unfortunately have 10 deaths countywide, so that number has crept up over the past week. And unfortunately, many of those associated with that care facility here in town. We also do continue to house a fair number of homeless individuals through the state's program in coordination with the county. So as of today, we had 81 homeless housed at four different motels here within Woodlands. Of those 81 residents, vast majority are woodland persons of origin, so continue to do a very good job of intaking those individuals, understanding their background and their history, connecting them, not just with sheltering, but also with services. Meanwhile, the emergency shelters, Walls, Fort and Hope, do have limited bed space available. However, now knowing that the health impacts of COVID will be protracted and our concerns to continue to mitigate the spread of the disease, we are advancing the emergency shelter program out there, or project rather, out there at Beamer 102. So on the consent calendar that you just approved, we had an item in cooperation with our city attorney's office that will allow us to expedite the bidding and the construction ultimately of the shelter at Beamer 102. So on your long-range calendar, I failed to mention, it's our hope to bring back to the council for award and approval is the construction contract for that emergency interim shelter. Meanwhile, we will also be working with the county, as well as the service providers that will be our partners on that project to bring an agreement forward that will articulate and outline everybody's roles and responsibilities in the project, both financially as well from a service standpoint. So look forward to bringing that one forward. As Councilmember Stalard mentioned, we do continue to engage with our local business community and hear their individual stories and begin to understand how those are translating across our community. And as Councilmember Stalard mentioned, we do hear a fair amount of continued concern from businesses, even with the anticipation of opening back up. There is concern that a lot of their customers may not return. They've changed their, you know, their way of doing business maybe, or potentially they are not going to be comfortable re-engaging in a group setting. And so I think there's a lot of anxiety that will perpetuate itself beyond the rollback. We'll be continuing to work with those businesses to monitor how business patterns are going to be changing. I am also proud that I think all the business owners that we've talked to have indicated they've at least tried to apply for, if not have applied for, the federal relief programs. However, we are hearing a lot of them while they applied are kind of stuck in a period where there is no longer funding available. But this afternoon, I understand that the federal government did reach a deal to advance additional relief across the country, including an economic development package of $310 billion to expand the paycheck protection program. to expand the paycheck protection program. So hopefully that will trickle down to allow some of the businesses that have applied yet have not received funding to benefit from that. Additionally, I did ask both public safety chiefs to provide an update to the council relative to the calls for service impacts and the patterns that have changed since the beginning of the shelter in place. Some interesting numbers that we're tracking. So I thought I would have Derek Caff, Chief Caff, start with what the police department has been experiencing relative to both 911 calls and normal calls across the community. And I'll have Chief Zane also follow up relative to the fire department's experiences. Yeah, you want to dig it up from there?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's good to see everyone again. Our officers are committed to public safety and we're continuing to patrol 24/7. We're still booking arrestees, cleaning up camps and issuing citations. We're handling many calls differently, though, and it takes a little bit longer, but it keeps staff and the public safe from unnecessary exposures. We've also started some new services, including quick birthday parades with police cars and motors. We took our books and badges program online and we work with Yolo County on sheltering the homeless persons that are over 65 years old or have a pre-existing condition in local hotels. When we look at the time period of March 19th through April 20th and compare this year with the same time last year, we see the overall calls for service are down by about 22%. We have seen an increase in burglaries, but a decrease in thefts and fights. One particular bright spot is the 40% decrease in traffic collisions. In spite of this reduction in calls for service, our officers have still made over 300 traffic stops, over 160 arrests and cleaned over a dozen camps. And I appreciate Councilmember Stoller's comments. I'm going to be taking that back to staff this week and letting them know that we've got to get back into the neighborhoods and be making those stops. Now, although everyone's noticed less traffic on the roads, it's concerning to us that we've written so many excessive speed tickets in all corners of town. Just today, we wrote 80-plus mile an hour speeding tickets on the east side of town by our motor units. Now, there have been a couple of shootings in this time period, and that's as compared to just one last year, but we have already made five arrests related to one of those shootings. And on one of those 300-plus traffic stops that I was talking about, we recovered two stolen assault rifles from a burglary that had taken place out in the county. The suspects in that case are connected to at least one burglar here in Woodland, and we're working on connecting them to others. And just last night, our gang team got another three handguns and drugs off the street during a search. Our gang team is actively working on cases and we continue to deploy the overtime suppression patrols that you folks gave us so that we can get out there during the peak times based on intelligence and trends. Our officers continue to keep watching the businesses that remain closed during this time. They made a number of great arrests for attempted burglary, and when they observed suspects trying to get into a place, they were able to make those arrests. And I want to highlight, just Sunday night, three suspects were arrested for burglary because an alert citizen called in after seeing them breaking into the business. That allowed our officers to know exactly who it was that had gotten into the business and already out by the time the officers arrived. We've spoken to our partners at the jail, and we learned that they are monitoring everyone in the jail for COVID-19 symptoms. As of 2:00 PM today, I'm happy to report there's still no cases of COVID-19 in our county jail. When a person is released from custody, they're provided with a pamphlet which lists information on symptoms to watch for and how to prevent the spread of the virus. The Yolo County jail staff assures me that they're going to continue to work in close partnership with the Yolo County Health Department to monitor and track the impact that that population has on the community as a whole. Now, we're concerned with the trends in the judicial system regarding repeat offenders not remaining in custody. We're working with our area partners, including the DA's office, to address the small number of offenders that cause an inordinate amount of crime in town. You may have noticed on our Facebook page, Yolo County District Attorney's press release, or even in the Daily Democrat, an article regarding one of those individuals that's been arrested three times already so far this month. But due to the state's zero bail directive, they've been released from custody. But we want to thank everyone that has faithfully followed the safer-at-home provisions and especially all the healthcare workers and all those other employees that have kept us fed, kept the power on, the sewer system running and all those parts of life that we often take for granted. They're certainly an essential employees, and we thank them for doing their work and putting themselves in harm's way to help the public stay safe. But we still need everyone to follow the 9:00 PM routine by locking their doors and securing their valuables. We also need the state legislature to fix those gaps in our judicial system, which allow criminals to repeatedly victimize business owners and citizens. We fully support and participate in restorative justice programs, but allowing predators to victimize good people of Woodland is not what the legislature intended, nor is it what everyone would want. Everyone can help us out by continuing to report suspicious activity, being a good witness and looking out for our neighbors while we stay at home. We continue to make stops and we will continue to make stops and arrests, no matter how many times the suspects get let out of jail. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Does any member of the council have a question for Chief Caff? If so, identify yourself. Hearing none. Thank you, Chief Caff.
I do, Mayor Landsberg, Angel Barajas.
Go ahead.
Hi, Chief, how you doing?
Good.
Good, good. Hey, listen, how is the WideGrip initiative going? And what are we doing to mitigate some of the ongoing shootings that have been occurring in Woodland regarding our gang members here in Woodland?
Certainly. So on a couple of different levels. One, we've been having a number of meetings internally in the city and with exterior partners, trying to figure out how do we maximize the effectiveness of the WideGrip program? One of the things that we'll be bringing back to the council is an assessment of what we believe these next steps are on how do we make WideGrip more effective. The city manager I know is working on a couple of, or a meeting for us. We're going to bring in an expert in this area that has had success in a number of different communities that are similar to ours, both in size and demographic. And we think that that is key to learn from what has been successful in these other communities. Now, on a more, just kind of a street level, we continue checking in with our folks that are doing mentorship work out in the community. That's important. The police department handles the suppression aspect, but we know that prevention and intervention are key. And we have a wonderful gentleman who is very, very engaged and involved in intervention. He's been working with a group of youth here in town. And not to overshare, but I was talking to him a couple of weeks ago. He's even got them doing things in the community, giving back as opposed to turning to this gang lifestyle, which can be very alluring, but we all know doesn't lead to a good end.
All right, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
All right. Chief Zane, do you want to provide an update for the council?
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Eric Zane, your interim fire chief. Just to provide an update, I will also, we're looking at the timeline from March 19th through April 20th. So it's comparative to the same timeline that the Chief Caff presented to you. We have seen a 20% reduction in call volume overall in the city. That is mostly due to a reduction in medical aids. So our medical aids are down 25%, although our fires are up twofold. Last time during that timeframe, we had 16 fires. We were up to 34 during that same timeframe. And we're finding that is somewhat due to the fact that more people are at home and they're cooking. We're having additional small cooking and kitchen fires very early on in the shelter in place when schools are out and parents were still working. We had kids cooking at home and, you know, trying to, trying to make lunch for themselves while mom and dad were at work. These are very typical for us to see during the holidays and in the early summer months, but we're seeing it adjusted at unusual timeframe, you know, moving forward through the COVID-19 response. So we're dealing with that. Our call volume is up about 2% for the year, but we are seeing, like I said, through this response, a slowdown in call volume for the fire department. As far as what else we're doing in the community right now, along with Woodland PD, we have been involved in some impromptu parades, one during Easter and several for some birthday party drive-bys, which has been nice to be able to get out and connect with the community on a different level during this timeframe. Fire Marshal Emily Walling is the EOC coordinator and doing a fantastic job of coordinating the meetings and the communications between the EOC team with the city of Woodland and coordination with Yolo County. And building inspections, new building inspections are continuing, and some of them are being done virtually to protect our employees and to also protect the contractors on site. So just like everybody, we are modifying the way we do business, but getting the job done. And I'm very proud of the response of our personnel through this. They're handling the COVID-19 response very well. Very fortunate that we have not had any employees have any symptoms or even be tested for COVID-19 because they're doing a very good job at protecting themselves while on duty and then also sheltering in place when they're off, which is also important. So I'm very proud of our organization at this, at this time and look forward to getting through this, getting past it and learning from it, just like everybody. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric. So Mayor, that concludes the update on COVID today. Give it back to the council for any remaining questions. Mayor Landsberg, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Ken, this is Councilmember Barajas.
Hey, Angel.
Hey. Regarding the facility that was impacted earlier this month, do we have a grasp and a handle on that situation? And how many people are currently infected with COVID-19? And how many, how many deaths are in, are in that facility?
Yeah, it's my understanding that the county health officer and the CDC are closely engaged at that facility. It is my understanding that the testing has been completed on all the residents of the Stollwood facility and majority, if not all of them, have tested positive, are continued under care. There have been multiple deaths as a result. It's hard to tell honestly whether those deaths were a direct result of COVID infection or whether those might have occurred naturally. But majority of the information that we receive is at a high level and relative to confirmed cases and the fatalities that have occurred there. So that's the extent of the information that's been provided to the city at that facility, but we will continue to keep in close contact with the county to see if situation changes.
Okay, thank you.
Rich, are you back on the line yet? I'm wondering if I should chair the meeting momentarily while Rich tries to resolve his issues.
Rich, we see you.
We can hear you a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's showing that it's muted, maybe on your end. Eric.
Perhaps we can proceed with the spring budget workshop?
Rich, you were muted for some reason. Are you?
About now.
Yes.
You're back. Good?
Yes.
Thank you. See where are we here? Any other questions for the city manager? I have one, one question slash comment for the city manager. Councilmember Ahas brought up the facility in Woodland. As you know, Mr. City Manager, we get a lot of inquiries from the press, and I'm going to, I want to make sure that our council members are not the ones who are addressing the issues of the facility that they go through you and or the county. Is that what we want to do?
Yes, I mean, I would advise that, you know, any inquiries that you receive be directed to me and I will arrange to put them in contact with the most person for the question that they're seeking. But really, it's the county that's the lead on this situation and we're really secondary.
Thank you. And council members, the reason I mention that is because we're getting a lot of inquiries from the Sacramento media source that want to make sure that all the information gets directed to the appropriate individuals and we're not making comments that we don't really know the facts of. So bear with us as we get to that process. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Takes us to item number nine, the spring budget workshop.
Yeah, so I'll do a quick introduction and then I'll turn it over to Kim McKinney, our finance officer. As the council is familiar, the annual budget process begins with a workshop that happens in about the April, early May timeframe every year. As part of this workshop, we're not seeking actual direction necessarily from the council relative to budget measures or the actual proposal itself. Really, the intention of this workshop is to give the, almost a refresher on how the annual budget is developed. The assumptions that go into that budget will provide a five-year forecast update with new information relative to the impacts that we're experiencing financially from the COVID pandemic. And these numbers, as you can imagine, are very preliminary. There's a lot of assumptions and guesses that go into the forecasting, even on a normal year. This year in particular, it's going to be very challenging. And so what we've developed with a budget team is a set of alternative scenarios that will provide bookends for both the best-case scenario as we predict today versus what the worst-case scenario might look like. And then from that information, provide some potential balancing measures for the council to begin to provide some feedback to the staff that we will then use when we come back to the council in May with proposed recommendations to bring the budget into alignment. As you're aware, we do have the good fortune to, you reserve and fund balance to give us a bit of a cushion. However, that fund balance can only go so far in addressing some of the projected economic impacts. And while we had hoped that the federal government would be able to provide some relief in the package that was adopted today to both state and governments, it appears that the current relief package will not include any immediate relief for local jurisdictions that are impacted. We are working with the League of California Cities actively, as well as the National League, to put some pressure on the federal government to continue to consider the impacts that local community are experiencing financially. So we will continue to monitor that closely, but will not be relying on any of that relief funding as we propose the budget for this year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kim McKinney, and she'll walk you through the slides that we have for you this evening, and then we'll get back to council feedback at the end of that. As we walk through the slides, we've asked Kim to pause at each section to provide the council an opportunity to ask questions on the slides that we just went through. There's a tremendous amount of information that will be presented. Do you want to make sure that the council has a good understanding of budget assumptions? And feel free to ask questions as we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I'm going to start with a quick overview. The city manager went over some of this, but the kind of outline that will be included in this presentation are an overview of the assumptions that we use when we develop the revenues that go into our forecast, the assumptions that we use for our expenditures, both for the personnel costs and the non-personnel expenditures. A very brief comment or two about some of the other funds that are, that are on our sort of watch list right now. And then we will get to some sensitivity and the kind of punchline for the five-year forecast. forecast for the general fund. Because we don't know, because there's so much we don't know really about the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic and the effect on the economy and the city's revenues, we're going to go over a couple of scenarios for the budget depending on different levels of revenue impact, some balancing measures that we are considering and will bring back in greater detail, and then a review of progress that has been made to date on some funding of priority needs. There's still work to be done in those areas and we will be seeking some council feedback so that we can be more productive when we come back to you in May with the balancing measures and framework for the five-year forecast and then a brief overview of what those next steps are. So this slide shows the revenues, the major revenue categories in the general fund. The very first column, the projected column here is the fiscal year we're in right now. And you can see that the city is very reliant on sales tax and property tax. They make up a majority of the revenues in the general fund. This sales tax number does not include Measure F, our half-cent sales tax, but it does include Measure J. In addition to sales and tax, the motor vehicle in Lew is a major revenue source that we get and its growth projection follows closely with assessed values. Licenses and fees are paid by customers primarily related to development activity through the city. Other taxes, this primary category here is our TOT, hotel occupancy taxes and transfer taxes that are collected on the resale of residential properties. Service charges are primarily for recreation activities and then other miscellaneous. It's really large in this year. That's where our strike team reimbursement has come, but moving forward is primarily where we have cell tower and lease revenues as well as investment income for the cities, for the general fund's share of the city's investments. The subtotal of revenues hovers around $49 million in the general fund. And then if you add Measure F on top of that, you'll get to the $54 to $55 million that you often hear when we talk about general fund revenues. As I mentioned before, property tax is a major component of the revenues. This is just a chart that shows that we've been steadily increasing property tax revenues that we received along with the increased assessed values over time. And we did take a pretty big hit during the recession and are actually revenues from property taxes recovered to pre-recession levels beginning in fiscal year 2015, 16 right here. So we've been making some recovery since then. Our baseline forecast, we are assuming a 4% growth in property tax next year. That's the assessed value is determined on a calendar year basis, so that assessed value information for the most part is already known. And the impacts to the economy that have happened over the last couple of months should not affect property taxes for next fiscal year. Following that, we've limited our growth assumptions to a moderate 2% inflationary factor for the most part. And you'll see the results of that in our forecast coming up. Sales tax is another large component. This chart is for the, what's called the Bradley Burn sales tax, which is just the 1% that is kept by the city or general sales taxes. We are expecting a pretty significant downgrade in our revenues for the current fiscal year. And we have a couple of scenarios moving forward that you'll see again when we get to the five-year forecast, but we have a consultant that helps us with our sales tax. Both they do compliance audits as well as assist with forecasting. And over the last few years, we've been working with them and I think we've shared with council some scenarios of, I'm not when, but if we ran into the next recession. Obviously, this recession is maybe not reflective of what a typical recession that we've seen in the past might be, but that still remains to be seen. And so we've assumed a almost 9% decline in our revenues this year. It does show a moderate growth next year, but that's still $1 million less almost than what we had anticipated previously in the forecast. Another moderate decline in fiscal year '22 and then recovering each year thereafter in our forecast. This chart shows a makeup of where our sales tax revenues come from and just highlight here that the three largest categories, I'm hearing green is transportation, which is primarily auto sales as well as gas. Those are clearly going to be impacted by the pandemic. Gas prices are down, sales of vehicles are down, so that we're expecting an impact there. The food products is primarily for restaurants, which are also impacted right now. And then 30% blue over here, general retail, again, having feeling a major impact as a result of this. And I just highlight this slide to show you that there can be a lot of volatility in this revenue source for the city, which makes it very challenging to forecast what our expectations are, which is exactly why we are coming up with a couple of scenarios since we don't know exactly how it will behave. So that was that overview of our revenues. The general fund expenditures, the baseline forecast is just over $50 million. And again, this excludes Measure F. By far, the majority of the costs in the general fund are for physicians and people. Of this $50 million, you can see the 67% here, about $33 million in the general fund is for all the personnel costs related to the positions paid for by the general fund. This is very typical of a government agency because we're service providers. So we'll cover in just a moment what impacts we're seeing related to these items in the forecast. And then the rest of the pie chart over here is fairly small with the exception of the contract service line item, which includes many different contracts in the city, but several quite large ones that we have limited control over the impact on our budget. So there's a lot of numbers on this slide. This is covering the larger categories included in the personnel costs. The very top row up here talks about or shows salaries in the general fund. We forecast in the general fund salaries based on employee bargaining group MOUs or memorands, understanding that have already been approved or implemented. And then we make some assumptions moving forward from there. You can see that the average impact is around 3% a year for expected growth in salary and that adds a little over half a million dollars each and every year to the general fund expenses. And over the five-year forecast, it will add close to $2.8 million based on the assumptions we have right now. This middle chart is retirement for Calpers. We spent a lot of time talking about Calpers and it continues to be a big challenge and probably will be even more of a challenge because they, like many others, are very impacted by what's happening primarily in the investment market right now. Calpers had a conference call with agencies about two weeks ago and shared with us what their investment portfolio looks like right now as a result of all the volatility. And so far for the fiscal year to date, they have a 4% loss in their overall investments. They expect each year to earn around 7%. So if you add the 7% that they're not getting along with the 4%, they're losing, that's an 11% overall shortfall in their investment performance for the year, which will have a large impact on the rates and unfunded liabilities for both of our miscellaneous and safety retirement plans. So we have factored into our forecast moving forward the estimated impacts related to Calpers. The only other bit of information there is that Calpers, there's a delayed impact to our rates. It takes two years to become effective when something happens with Calpers. So anything that happens in fiscal year 1920 will show up in our general fund impact in fiscal year '22, '23, right here. So you can see at the bottom of this chart in the middle that we start out adding almost $600,000 a year. It jumps up substantially in '23 for, partly for the reason we just discussed. And we're adding about $800,000 a year each year. That will continue to grow in the general fund and over the five-year forecast, adding almost $3.7 million to increases in Calpers. OPEB is retiree medical. This is just a reflection only of the actual premiums that we pay for folks who are retired right now. There's a separate contribution we'll talk about later related to OPEB. And you can see that this again goes up every year partially as some people retire, but primarily related to the growth in health premiums, which is also reflected right below. This is health premiums for active employees. Again, some of those are agreed upon already in MOUs and some are making assumptions moving forward. There is a larger than normal increase in fiscal year '21, '22, and that's as a result of added positions, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. And again, added over the five-year forecast in health premiums is $1.2 million. So all of those items that we've covered right here are part of the $32 million that are in personnel-related costs in the general fund. They continue to grow at getting close to $2 million a year in the general fund and over our five-year forecast adding more than $8 million, which is substantially more than our revenue growth over the same period of time. The cumulative revenue growth in the general fund over the same period of time was about $3.8 million. So that highlights a problem that we have moving forward. We've had this problem for a while. It continues to be a problem. It's actually gets a little worse and depends on the scenario of the forecast that we look at. This is a graph showing the city, the contribution rates for both the safety and miscellaneous plan. So the red line is the miscellaneous plan and the green line, the safety plan, and just showing how the trajectory of rates over time. In fiscal year '09 right here, Calpers had about a 30% loss in their investment and the trajectory up from there has been recovering over time, the large loss that they incurred there in the beginning in 2016 is when Calpers made some adjustments to their future assumed returns on investments, which also had significant impact on our rates. So we've talked about this before, just a graphical representation. And down here is a reminder that in 2018, the city made a $4 million contribution to Calpers out of one-time money that directly paid down our unfunded liabilities in both of the plans that we have and actually has made, right away had an impact and reduced the annual contributions that we had to make to Calpers on an annual basis. This next slide shows what the city's overall contribution is to Calpers each year in our forecast. This, in fiscal year 2021, which is the baseline forecast we're talking about, the general fund contribution is $6.7 million, which is the majority of the cost for the city, but we do have quite a few other funds that also have employees in them that are participants in Calpers. So overall, the city contributes or will be contributing next year more than $10 million to Calpers and the 6.7 from the general fund is included in that $10 million number. And as we showed before, we are anticipating that to continue to grow over time. And at the end of the last year of the forecast, almost $14.7 million in annual contribution to Calpers. Out of that, about 9.8, almost $9.9 million being specifically in the general fund. OPEB, which I briefly mentioned earlier, is retiree medical payments. The city stopped offering this benefit to employees in 2006. So this number represents what the city would need to set aside to pay for projected benefits for the retirees or participants that we know moving forward. We had a recently updated study that shows that our unfunded liability total is $43 million roughly. If we were to meet that mark over time, we should be setting aside or we should be paying about four and a half million dollars a year, which would be about a 16 and a half percent of salaries that we pay each year. We don't quite meet that contribution level yet. We do obviously pay the retiree medical premiums as they're due each year. In addition to that, we make what's called pre-funding contributions down here at the bottom. We send about a million dollars a year more than we need to just for the premiums to a trust fund that we set up back in 2013 to help us accumulate money for future benefit payments. Out of that million dollars a year, about $600,000 comes from the general fund. And then just up here in yellow, you can see that we've been contributing over time. Our expected balance at the end of this fiscal year would be seven and a half million dollars available in that trust fund. In addition to personnel in the general fund, we have other expenditures, the largest one being contract services or what we call supplies and services, is just over $7 million in the general fund, not including Measure J. The largest ones are kind of highlighted down here, that park maintenance landscaping contract, city attorney contract, cleaning of city facilities in the general fund and two very large ones here at the bottom, the contributions that the city makes to the Yolo County Sheriff's Office for Animal Services and then our share of dispatch services with Yega, which between the two of those is close to $3 million a year. And we have so far had very little say in the impact on our budget moving forward. So we assume a 2% increase with the exception of the animal services and Yega contract announced, we assume those are going to go up about 5% a year, which adds more than $100,000 each year to the budget just for those two contracts. I won't go in detail over here. This is just a snapshot of what else is included in the general fund. We have some training, some citywide overhead charges and then charges from our internal service funds for services provided for technology, for fleet maintenance and then collections that we make over time for future replacement of the fleet. This number right here is the cost primarily for irrigating, the general fund, parks and landscaping throughout the city. And this other utilities are PG&E and you can see the factors that we've included in the budget moving forward related to each of those categories. In addition to the general fund, we have more than 100 other funds in the city that each have their own budgets. We won't go over all of those right now, but I do want to highlight a few that are continually problematic and we need to bring them up each year to remind that they do have a problem. And the ones that we've highlighted here, to some extent, already received some assistance from the general fund, but continue to operate at a shortfall. So the city cemetery already receives a general fund contribution of $200,000 each year, but still operates at an annual deficit of around $230,000 primarily because of the cost for landscape maintenance and irrigation at the cemetery. And there's very little revenue that's generated there. And the city's stream drain program, the general fund contributes $242,000 a year towards the minimum level of service that we provide in addition to the very low user fees that we collect, which is 48 cents per month for a residential property. It's been that same fee since the early 90s. It's operating at a $378,000 a year deficit. And then finally, the transportation funds, which are primarily the funds that are revenue sources are the gas taxes, which is HUDA here, means gas tax, and then the TDA funds that we receive allocated through SAICOG. The priority for those fund sources is to the Yolo County Transportation District and we can use the remaining money from TDA to assist with funding our street maintenance programs. YCTD's budget continues to grow each year. They take up a little bit more of the revenues that are available each year. And so that's a difference. And so that's a difficult funding source and then sales, I'm sorry, the gas taxes. Has been volatile and we are expecting. Or have been told to expect a fifteen to thirty percent reduction in the revenues that we typically get from gas tax as a result of the. The lower gas tax, sorry, the lower gas price right now as well as the lowered. Usage of gases as it relates to the pandemic. We continue to have some capital project funds that have accumulated large deficits over time. We've been slowly chipping away at them and I feel. Proud of us for making progress, but we still need to be mindful of them. This general fund capital project has. Does not have a fund source other than contributions from the general fund. And those are primarily were matching funds to other capital projects over time. And that that won't go away without funding, some discretionary funding source being able to contribute to that. To that fund. And then our development impact fee funds, which we talk about a couple of times a year. We have two, the first two on the list, the sewer and parks funds. We issued debt between two thousand two and two thousand five to build large capital projects in advance of having collected the revenue necessary. We continue to pay ongoing debt service related to those outstanding bonds. So we continue to build up a deficit because the development activity for a long time did not generate enough money to. Pay for the debt service, the last couple of years we've had a pretty healthy development activity which has helped. Decrease these deficits that have accumulated, but they will continue to be. On our watch list moving forward and I'm, the council will continue to hear about them as well. So I will pause right there to see if anybody has any questions over the information I've covered so far.
Thank you, Kim, does any member of the council have a question for Kim up to this point? Hearing done, continue.
Okay, so all of that information we just talked about. Leads up to the first version, which we're calling Scenario A of the general fund five year forecast. As I mentioned before, there's a lot of information that's not known about what our revenues are going to look like over the next year or so. So we're taking a, we're looking at a kind of range of possibilities here. So we're calling this scenario sort of the moderate version. What's included on the five year forecast here, the first column in yellow shows how we actually ended fiscal year nineteen, so last fiscal year. Which we went over with council, and we did the midyear budget, I believe, just. I'll highlight, you know, kind of the. Highlight of that year, we ended fiscal year nineteen with an unreserved fund balance of. Just under fifteen million dollars, which is twenty nine and a half percent. Of our revenues, which is a very healthy reserve balance and that was in large part to better than expected revenues. During that fiscal year. This first green column was the budget that was adopted in July of twenty nineteen for the year that we're in right now. When we adopted the budget, we thought we were going to have a beginning fund balance of twelve point eight million dollars, which is. Two million dollars less than we actually ended up with. And we projected or budgeted to have a a small surplus of about two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars in the general fund. Over time, and we'll cover this a little later, we've been allocating some one time money as it becomes available and being very. Judicious about how we use general fund reserves. So we did allocate one time money of six hundred and ninety thousand dollars in our budget. And we also set aside a million dollars out of the reserve to contribute towards. Instruction of the fire station relocation. And again, at the time we adopted this budget, we expected that we'd end the fiscal year with. Almost eleven point four million dollars or about a twenty three and a half percent reserve balance. The second green column is what we are now projecting for the current fiscal year. Again, fixing the fun, beginning fund balance now matches what we know. Our year started at how we ended fiscal year nineteen with fourteen point nine million dollar fund balance. Our revenues are adjusted now to, so there was some positive when we did the midyear adjustment. We got, the city received half a million dollars repayment from the Valley Clean Energy for a loan we made a couple of years ago. We also have, you know, over four hundred thousand dollars in reimbursements for strike team costs, so that makes the. Projected revenue for this year look better than what we adopted, if you were to take that money out. Along with a few other things, we're actually downgrading pretty substantially the revenue for this fiscal year related to. Mostly to. Sales taxes, TOT and investment related income. We downgraded our revenue assumptions for the current fiscal year for property taxes by about eight percent. Which is about a six hundred thousand dollar decline over what we were anticipating before. And that, as well as TOT, we downgraded that substantially anticipating that we would receive very little. Revenue beyond what we already got through January of this year. And when we do that, we're now projecting a shortfall for the current fiscal year. Of seven hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars approximately. The six hundred ninety thousand dollars of one time money that we allocated has for the most part already been spent and will still be factored into the budget and the fund balance moving forward. And we continue to show the one million dollar set aside for the fire station. So now our updated forecast for the current fiscal year under this revenue scenario means that we would end. The current fiscal year with an unreserved, I'm sorry, unreserved fund balance right here of. Twelve point three million dollars, which is twenty five percent. Of revenues, which is still in excess of our twenty percent reserve target, so even though we're. We're digging into our reserves here, we started the year with more than we anticipated, so that's helping our ending reserve balance in this situation. Now if we move forward to this first blue column, which is the baseline forecast for next fiscal year. So baseline in in our language means that we take all of the personnel and all the services that we provide right now. And just move that forward into next year's dollars. So we've done that with our expenditures and then, you know, we started this back in. December, working on the budget process and we had to revisit our revenue assumptions, so. We substantially downgraded again, same thing, sales tax, TOT. And a few other categories, but those are again the largest impacts here. Some related to our property tax projection, we had had a little bit more. Optimism when we did this, so we kind of scaled that back a little bit. And what that shows then is. I'm sorry, before I get to that picture, this expenditure line item includes, like I mentioned, all of the. Services and staff that we have this year moved forward. In addition to what we have this year, we've also included in that expenditure number. The assumption that we would be hiring three additional police officers if we were to receive the cops grant that we applied for. And we don't know the outcome of that grant application and we probably won't for a while, but we have for the time being included. Assume that those positions would be hired and would be funded. In our baseline expenditure numbers. So based on the updated budget for next year, we're projecting in this scenario. Out of a million and a half dollar shortfall in the general fund. We have some one time money included in here and we'll revisit that a little bit later about the types of things those are included. As you can see, we're not anticipating having substantial flexibility as we've had in the past to allocate one time money, but there are a few. Priority items that will continue to need to be addressed. So what's included right here, right now shows. Under this set of assumptions that we would end fiscal year twenty twenty one with a ten point five million dollar reserve balance. Which is twenty one and a half percent, still more than our twenty percent target by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we take the same assumptions that we used in our baseline forecast and apply the. Different growth factors that we talked about earlier in the presentation, moving forward to both our revenues and to our expenditures. You can see the effect that I mentioned of how our expenditures are quickly outpacing the revenue growth that we have in the general fund. We would, in fiscal year twenty one twenty two have a projected four million dollar deficit. Where we would fall below our twenty percent threshold right away in fiscal year twenty two. And would actually use up the entire general fund reserve sometime between fiscal years twenty three and twenty four. And that's again, if we took no steps to implement any balancing measures and just allow the general fund to. Roll on under the assumptions that we've used here. And so again, at the end of the five year forecast, we would be projecting about eight point three million dollar annual shortfall in the general fund. And we would have a negative fund balance of over fifteen million dollars. So the general fund has, there's some sensitivity to certain of our assumptions that we include. The largest ones I'm going to cover here being our, three of our revenue sources and then another reminder about CalPERS here. Property taxes and motor vehicle and lieu, the growth in those two. Revenue sources follow assessed, the changes in assessed value. So these numbers up here are property tax, motor vehicle and sales tax are all the numbers that we are included in the. General fund forecast that I just showed to you. And we were anticipating the shortfall of one point five million dollars. If we were to decrease our assumptions by one percent for each of those. And this is the revenue impact that we would have just for decreasing one percent, hundred and thirty five thousand dollars in property taxes, fifty six. And motor vehicle and a hundred and forty thousand dollars in sales taxes and our revised. Deficit for the fiscal year would be almost one point eight million dollars. And this just shows the impact in the forecast of changing just one percent in the first year. What that looks like for the remainder of the five years. So if we were to have to downgrade in two percent of our property taxes. These two numbers right here would be doubled and would compound throughout the five year forecast. So there's a, you know, a fair amount of sensitivity included in these revenue assumptions in the general fund. And as I mentioned before, CalPERS. They are very dependent on their investment returns to. It's a, it's a key factor in allocating or determining the allocation to all of their member agencies on what they pay. Or retirement benefits every year, so if a CalPERS. Lost their actual investment earnings came in one percent less than what they expected. That impact is phased in over a five year period through the city's rates and then after the fifth year remains at that heightened level for. Another fifteen years, so it takes twenty years to pay off one year differential in assumptions. So this shows in over a one percent change, so if it's CalPERS earned six percent instead of seven percent. In the current fiscal year, so in fiscal year nineteen twenty, beginning in fiscal year twenty two twenty three. There would be another fifty thousand dollars that the city would need to pay towards PERS and we're assuming about thirty eight thousand of that would be in the general fund. And then that would be, you know, twenty percent impact, so the first of a five year phase in and then forty percent, sixty percent, eighty percent. And eventually a hundred percent impact of that one percent change in CalPERS investment rates. It's about a two hundred and forty thousand dollar overall impact to the. City's contribution and about a hundred and seventy seven of that in in the general fund. So as I mentioned earlier, our assumptions right now are based on what we know from CalPERS, which is that their. Performance to date for this fiscal year is falling short of their expectation by eleven percent. So you can take these numbers that you see on this chart and multiply them by eleven to see what the impact is to our overall. Forecast from one year of very poor returns for CalPERS. So this is a second version of the five year forecast, we're calling it Scenario B. Our expenditure assumptions remain the same between these two scenarios of the forecast. But because there's so much we don't know about the revenues, we took, we took another look at our expectations. And made some additional adjustments in in a lot of cases based on how our revenues performed during the recession from two thousand eight to two thousand ten. So is another decline in. Sales taxes, which it took it down to. About a thirteen million dollar reduction over the five year period in sales taxes by downgrading our assumptions, we took it down. Eight percent in the current year. Three percent, five percent in the next year and three percent the year after that and then kind of carried that forward. We left our property tax assumptions the same. Again, fiscal year twenty one, we don't think will be super impacted, but we did downgrade. Our overall assumptions from how we started the budget to a minimal two percent growth out in the out years. We, we further downgraded TOT taxes, we further downgraded. Almost all of our revenue sources, a large impact to development related activity and to user fees for recreation programs. And again, that was based on history and our, the revenues and how they behaved during the. The recession, so. The first two columns on this chart are unchanged from the one we talked about before, fiscal year nineteen is done and those are the actual numbers. So they don't change between scenarios and our adopted budget also doesn't change between scenarios. The difference starts here in the second green column, which is how we're projecting the current fiscal year to end. As I mentioned, again, we, we left our expenditure assumptions the same, the revenues however, we downgraded some more. And now the revised projected deficit for the current fiscal year would be just over one point one million dollars. In the general fund, the one time money and the million dollar allocation still remain in the forecast. And we would end under this scenario, the current fiscal year with a twelve million dollar fund balance, which is. Twenty four point seven percent, which is still in excess of our twenty percent reserve target. Moving the assumptions forward again into the next fiscal year. We start the year with the revised twelve million dollar number. We've downgraded the revenues some more compared to the Scenario A that we talked about. Almost in every category, the largest being again, sales tax and TOT. And we still have some one time money that we think will need to be allocated. And under this revised scenario with the downgraded revenues, if we made no adjustments to the current fiscal year. We would have this three point six million dollar shortfall. We'd end the year with just over eight million dollars in unreserved fund balance, which is below our twenty percent threshold by. Almost one point three million dollars. Again, carrying all of that forward into the next fiscal year and out. This is just even worse situation where our expenditures outgrow our revenues by. Even greater pace and even more in each fiscal year. So our next year out would be a six million dollar deficit, all the way up to a ten and a half million dollar deficit under these assumptions. We would be below our twenty percent target for reserve balances right away, starting in fiscal year twenty one. And would use up all reserves sometime between twenty two and twenty three. And again, if no balancing measures were implemented in all of these assumptions. Came to pass for this particular scenario. I'm going to pause right here, I know we've covered a lot of information and be happy to answer any questions that anybody has right now.
Thank you, Kim, does any member of the council have a question or comment for Kim at this point? Hearing done, Kim, go ahead.
So I mentioned a couple of times our twenty percent reserve, that's referencing the policy that was adopted by council. Where our goal is to have a general fund unreserved. Fund balance equal to twenty percent of our ongoing revenues. The reasons to have a fund balance to that level, I'm going to highlight this one here is to. Set aside money to address economic uncertainty and unforeseeable emergencies, which is exactly the situation we're in right now. Some of the approved uses of reserves that were included in this policy, as a reminder, our payments towards our unfunded liabilities. As a reminder, our payments towards our unfunded liabilities, for example, PERS and OPEB. Transfers to other funds that have deficit fund balance that need assistance. We have capital projects that might need matching funds. And then allocation for one-time non-recurring needs really is just a, a review of what our general fund reserve policy states. Um, this is really small and I know there's a lot of information on here. I just wanted to highlight that we have been very successful in using the general fund reserve balances over the last several years. If you add all these years together, it's more than $15 million of, of money that we've come up with out of general fund reserves to allocate towards a variety of different projects or programs or priority needs. A big one in here I'm going to highlight again was, you know, over $3 million from the general fund for a payment towards CalPERS, which had an immediate and positive impact on the annual recurring payments that we make. Some large contributions to the fire station, over $2.1 million here. We've highlighted in this last column, Lee, I've mentioned a couple of times that we do expect very little flexibility in the area of one-time money this year. Unlike the last several years. But there are a couple of important topics and we can, we will be revisiting some more detail later. The largest item in here is that the enterprise system that the city uses for all of our accounting, utility billing, permitting, everything is being phased out. And we will need to implement a new system over the next couple of years. So it's a very large, very expensive, very time-consuming process that we are in the planning stages for. And this $230,000 amount is a contribution we've identified specifically from the general fund. But we have found funding sources from many other areas. But this is, is going to be a priority and we won't have a choice but to do this project. There's some temporary staffing needs in the community development department. Some of the numbers aren't filled in and that's partly because we haven't decided on what that, how much to allocate yet. And some of that will be dependent on building activity and we may have to start out with an, you know, one number and come and revisit that later. And the other one that's blank here that has received money each and every year for the last five years or so is homeless activities, which are not in our baseline budget and have for them for all of the time in the general fund been funded by one-time allocation each of these years. And we anticipate that there would continue to need to be some level of allocation in the budget. But have not yet identified that amount. So, you know, there's a lot of information on here, but it's just to, in part highlight, we've been very successful over time. We don't have that amount of flexibility right now, but there are a few priority needs that we will be revisiting with you when we bring a recommended budget. I could stop one more time if anyone has any questions specifically about reserve balances or one-time money.
Thank you, Kim. Does any member of the council have a question or comment at this stage?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Rodriguez. I have a comment and from looking at what we're projecting for the next few years. I feel that we probably won't be able to see the real, you know, some good numbers in place until a year from today. And it's then when we'll be able to really assess where we can use extra money, given all the, given the downturn that we project due to this pandemic. Is that kind of what we're looking at, Kim? How we measure? What we can expect in the years to follow?
As far as allocating one-time money? Yeah, I think it kind of, it depends on a number of things and you're right that we don't have a lot of information right now. The impact to the, our revenues and overall reserves can be a, it can be a wide range of numbers right now. And so because of that unknown and because we are projecting deficits, we're, we are talking about delaying and holding off as much as possible on allocation of one-time money. And if things turn out better, we always, we always come back to council for quarterly updates and for mid-year reports. And those would be opportunities to revisit priority projects and funding throughout the year.
Okay. And then I'll save my additional comments for, for a little towards the end. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kim.
Okay, so the framework that we use every year when adopting a budget is, you know, the goal is to support our ongoing expenditures with our ongoing revenues. We don't want to be living off one-time money. Limiting the use of our funding or one-time needs and maintaining our reserve balances. And again, just highlighting the reserve policy limited primarily to use of reserves for one-time expenditures. I'm going to highlight this here though, that to hedge against revenue projections or fluctuations, which is, you know, again, where we find ourselves this year. And then this last line item, to defer delay, the need for service reductions. Which means, you know, that having a healthy reserve balance means we could some, you know, buy ourselves some time to implement measures to balance the budget. That, so we don't have to make drastic reductions immediately, but a more thoughtful and planned implementation. So there's a number of balancing measures that we're considering or that will be considered when we develop a recommended budget. I'm going to highlight these and, and say that we're going to come back and revisit these in detail in May. In the second meeting in May, we'll come back. But right away, one of the sometimes easier or less painful items to look at in the budget are what positions do you have that are funded but are not filled? So vacant positions included in the budget. Uh, we do have a couple. Uh, we will be looking at those as part of our balancing measures. But I do want to highlight again here that the three police officers that were planned for, anticipated, if we were to be successful with the application for our COPS grant, are included in the budget, are vacant. We don't know the outcome of the grant, but they have a pretty, they are a pretty expensive position. So this range of costs here in the first year. And while we're still receiving some grant funds, we anticipate a $400,000 impact to the general fund. But over the five years, as we leave the three positions there and we no longer have any offsetting grant funds, we're anticipating an impact of over $700,000 in each year for those three positions. So we would be looking for some, those could be part of a balancing measure that we, that we propose and we'd be looking for some thoughts or feedback from the council there. We also could look and have looked in the past at reallocating existing staff to other funding sources. And really what this is referencing is if, if we have flexibility in measure F, we may consider moving or changing the funding of some general fund-funded positions, probably in the area of public safety over to measure F. Uh, we're going to briefly cover measure F in a little while, but that, that funding source is also impacted by the economy and the COVID. And we do have a couple of different scenarios for measure F. So our ability or flexibility to absorb additional costs could be limited, again, depending on the revenue situation for that fund. The general fund includes a fair amount of money in our budget for transfers or contributions that are, that we've built in over time that are not legally required, but are good business practices and why we've included them. So we've begun a couple of years ago, contributing money to a fund that pays for facility repairs and replacement, which we've had no money set aside for in the past. The general fund contributes currently $150,000 each year and that's maintained throughout the five-year forecast. The general fund has also been contributing $50,000 each year to accumulate, to help with replacement of the sports park turf at a future date. And again, that's also in the baseline. And then I covered earlier, the OPEB or retiring medical that in addition to what we pay for specifically for premiums for retired employees, we also contribute more than $1 million to a trust fund each year. And $600,000 of dollars of that comes from the general fund. So as an example, those three line items together are $800,000 each year that are included in the general fund budget. There's a reason they're there, but they are areas where we may consider temporarily suspending, reducing or delaying to help us implement some balancing measures. We've asked for some input from the departments and gave them some target reductions, which we'll go over in just a moment. Um, which could be included in scenarios. And then listed on here finally is discussion with our employee bargaining groups. But as I, you know, started off in one of the early slides, talking about the general fund expenditures and our assumptions. The, by far, the largest part of the general fund is personnel-related costs. Our employee groups have been very helpful in the past and very open to working with the city to assist with balancing the budgets or addressing significant financial difficulties that we've had. So we anticipate having some conversations with them to see what kinds of ideas we can come up with. These balancing measures, because we have a range of potential revenue impacts we're looking at. We are looking to come back and we'll be coming back sort of a range of budget balancing measures as well. That can be potentially implemented in phases or tiers as more information becomes available on our revenues and how they're impacted. So that we aren't making unnecessary or significant reductions without having a little bit more information. But these topics are all available for discussion. This slide shows what our baseline budgets are for each of the departments in the general fund. Fiscal year 21 over here, it's $46 million is the baseline budget for each of these departments. We've left measure J, all of that number and also what we call non-departmental, which are the transfers I talked about just recently, the OPEB facilities transfers. Helped to a couple of funds that are operating at deficits. And then the largest piece of that is the transfer of measure F money that we receive into the general fund. And that's close to $6 million. So those numbers really aren't, we don't have a lot of flexibility there and couldn't contribute necessarily other than, to balancing the budget, other than a couple of the transfers that we talked about earlier. So we looked at a couple of scenarios with the departments and how, what targets to give them. And what we landed on was that we were asking each department for a 5% reduction. Except for the public safety, we've asked them for 2.5% of their budget. A 5% target would have been double these numbers here, which is a significant impact. It's a significant impact in each and every department. Cause anything that was easy to reduce or get rid of was taken out of the budget a long time ago. So this, these are going to be, these are challenging for each of the departments. And some of the potential items that come out of there will be, will be difficult to talk about. But we did receive from each and every department, some of their proposals. Yesterday and today, we'll be reviewing them internally and coming back, as I mentioned to council in, in May to discuss in more detail what these potential balancing measures would be. So if, under this scenario, we're asking for a million and a half dollars from each of the departments to help us come up with different tiers of balancing the budget. I could pause one more time if anyone has any questions about what I just covered.
Um, I have a question, Kim, maybe for you and, and/or the, the city manager. You mentioned the scenario here for the decreasing contributions for sports park turf replacement. Would that be for the scenario for this next fiscal year budget? And would that impact the current proposal to the current proposal for the turf replacement that's pending at the sports park?
Right now, we haven't actually proposed that. It's just one of the ideas that we're considering. And if we were to include that as a balancing measure beginning next year, it would not affect the funding that's already been identified for the turf replacement project that's being worked on right now.
Okay, okay. And I'll come back to that one later too. Thank you.
Kim, I have a comment for you when you're ready for it.
Okay.
Uh, and it's this, when you're looking at balancing measures, I would encourage you and staff to continue to explore other alternatives than ones you look at already. And I thank you for doing that. But one of the things I think that we have to determine is that the pain, and it will be painful for every department, has to be shared by everyone and not just a couple of departments. So feel free to, you know, share the pain throughout the departments. If worst-case scenario, best-case scenario, et cetera. But I think that all departments have to realize that we need to look at every possible balancing measure. That's just my comment. I have a question now for you and it's this. Have you had an opportunity to talk to economic forecast experts? Does this particular, and we're going to call it a recession, just because I'm not a scientist. Assuming it's a recession, how does this type of recession compare with something like 2008 and onward?
So I would say there's not a consistent or clear answer to that. I have participated in a lot of discussions with various organizations and agencies about how they are measuring or anticipating or forecasting the impacts to their revenues based on this. You know, some people are saying a sort of a worst-case scenario, and I hate to call it that, is to look at how, how your city was impacted by the recession in 2008 and hope that it's not that bad, but have that be what you plan for. Depending on who you talk to, you know, I think everyone agrees that for the next probably year, there's a a fair amount of volatility and unknown. We do have a sales tax consultant that we use that's been helping us and continues to help us forecast what the impacts will be. And they, they know more than I do about forecasting that. So we will continue to work with them and update the numbers as we know more information.
Thank you. I have a last question and then maybe between you and Ken might be able to answer this question for me. Assuming that the, Washington gets off their butt, excuse me, off the dime and does something for small, for the smaller governments that have been passed over in the last few sessions, assuming that Congress does pass something for us. Would you come back with a different forecast, assuming that we got some measure of relief from that program like that?
I think we would certainly include it. Once we have more information about what types of funding would be available and what that could pay for, then I would certainly think we would, we would try to take advantage of anything that we can. The only comment that I would say is that some of that money or most of that money generally is one-time in nature and doesn't necessarily impact or fix the long-term forecast for the general fund. So we would take any help that we can get, I'm sure, and, and would reflect that in updated forecasts when we have more information.
Okay, thank you. Does any other member of, of council have a question or comment for Kim? There are none. Let's keep moving.
Okay, so every year during the budget process, departments identify or continue to identify a lot of unfunded needs that we've covered over the years with the council. Just as a highlight for you, that we received this year $10.6 million in funding requests from the departments. Included in that in the first year of general fund, $2.00, almost $3 million in ongoing funding requests. And another almost $2 million in one-time funding requests. And as I mentioned before, or as you could see from the five-year either scenario of the five-year forecast that we've included in here, we really have limited flexibility to include anything in our ongoing expenditures beyond what's already included. And that, anything that we did add really would just increase the level of balancing that we would need to come up with for the general fund. And we are anticipating, again, because of the impacts on the reserve balances, limited flexibility and allocation of one-time money. So many of these identified funding requests will continue to be unfunded needs moving forward. And the, our enterprise funds, which is primarily water, sewer and storm drain funds. We received requests for $400,000 of ongoing expenditures and $1.4 million in one-time costs. We might have a little bit more flexibility in the area of one-time costs here, but ongoing We might have um a little bit more flexibility in the area of one time costs here, but ongoing, anything we add ongoing really has to be matched against what we. Um, included in the adopted rates that we have. For water and sewer and any need that's um requested in the storm drain fund really becomes a general fund request because there is no money available in in that fund. Uh, we have a lot, a lot of other funds in the city. As I mentioned before, I have over a hundred funds that each have their own budget. Um. We received additional funding requests of nearly six hundred thousand dollars of ongoing costs and um on three point seven million dollars in one time money. Some of the big categories of these other funds are um transportation related, which I covered earlier, that we're expecting a pretty significant impact in. Uh, revenue to those funds to cover already um struggling fund sources. And our lighting and landscape districts districts are also included in this other fund category. And most of those are already at their maximum assessment levels and have limited flexibility. And any flexibility that we do have, we're being um very careful with. So again, we're expecting very li- little in the way of funding recommendations there. And finally, capital projects, which we will be revisiting at the next council meeting. Um, we don't have a lot of funding sources available to help us build capital projects. We've been very successful. In getting grants, particularly in the area for uh road projects and our staff continue to do a really good job. Um, securing and continuing to look for additional funding. But really, our funding's, our discretionary funding sources for capital projects are in measures F and J. Which compete with ongoing operational needs and we do um still struggle with paying ongoing debt service, at least for another couple of years. Out of measure F in the event that um development activity can't cover that ongoing need. And as I um mentioned earlier in this presentation. Other capital funds that we have primarily for development impact be related are already in deficit fund balances and don't have available. Revenues to pay for projects. So um it's just kind of continues to highlight funding challenges that we have. Outside of the general fund and how um there aren't still a lot of unfunded needs throughout the city and within all the departments. A couple of these priority needs that we've been talking about for some time in the area of capital projects are for the uh fire station relocation project. That's an expected ten to twelve million dollar project. Um. So far, we've set aside a million dollars in the general fund as uh in the current fiscal year, we've set aside again a reserve of fund balance there. Um, accommodating additional contributions from reserves right now. Is is pretty challenging. Um, as far as also building in any future potential um debt service payments, if we were to issue bonds to help us construct that also would. Anything we do there would be added to our general fund forecast that would also need to be. Wouldn't, we would need to come up with some balancing measures to accommodate that as well. The um second pool, the southeast area pool. Is a seven to nine million dollar project that's been talked about a number of times so far. We have one point two five million dollars set aside. In measure J, that can contribute or will contribute towards uh construction of that project in the future. Outside of that, we don't, we have not yet identified. Additional other funding sources to build the project, uh let alone to. Um, operate the pool once it's actually built. That that's not factored into the general fund moving forward and would also need to be um. Estimated and included in any forecast scenario when we had a better idea of what the timing of construction might be. And the sec- the second phase of the sports park, um again, lots of. Different kind of smaller projects included there that can be up to a sixteen million dollar total. The city set aside what we consider to be our final contribution, our ultimate contribution of one point five million dollars and hopefully will aid. With some of the other um groups in doing fundraising to accomplish the projects that are listed under this phase two. And that funding was, is a combination of measure J and measure F that has been set aside. And then finally down here, the library master plan has identified um projects up to twenty five million dollars for expansion. Of the library. We have not yet identified funding sources to accomplish that project, but we have been making some progress in funding some short term. Priority facility needs at the library out of um general fund primarily and a little bit in measure J. So because there is such limited funding available within the city, we have been. Exploring and looking for other funding sources that might be available, particularly in the area of grants. Uh, we actually have assistance of a. Of Petra Marshans, working with the city to do some additional exploration uh on whether. Other funding sources that might be available for these priority projects. And uh so far, we have not identified a significant amount of funding, but we'll continue to do so and these continue to be. Um, recognized as priorities for the city, uh just the ultimate funding of the. Instruction as well as any operating impacts. It's got a little bit more challenging, I think, under our more recent scenarios of the budget. I'm going to briefly go over. Measures F and J. So I know this is a small print on. And a lot of numbers, and we will be revisiting measure F. At the next council meeting in more detail. Um, but measure F is also impacted by. The unknown and uncertainty in our sales tax revenues, our half cent sales tax. Right now, this is our baseline assumption. Um, this column right here, fiscal year twenty twenty one is the year that we're doing the budget for. We have again two scenarios of revenue. This is sort of the more moderate. Reduction in revenues that expected here. Um, we still set aside money for assistance with debt service. We have some capital projects that's been identified over time. Measure F uh provides ongoing assistance to our street and road crew for maintenance because um of the shortfalls that we've been experiencing in TDA and gas tax revenues. And then we have some public safety funding for um. Two fire and three police full time positions, as well as some existing staff for economic development. So this is um our assumption for next fiscal year. We can see um under this scenario, we do have. Some net revenues available that could, that could be a source of um. A balancing measure that we could consider in the general fund, but we do have to be careful. Uh, in the out years, um what that looks like. And again, depending on the revenue impact. This is the second version of the exact same spreadsheet, but with uh more downgraded revenues here and. Uh, we do have still are able to accommodate next year's expenditures in there. Uh, with basically break even, which does not provide a lot of flexibility. Um, to reallocate any money from the general fund or positions from the general fund over to here. So. Just sharing with you. You know, i- in terms of balancing measures, what the measure F impact for revenues is and and. All these other items that I sort of glossed over will be revealed in more detail next time. Uh, measure J. Is a quarter cent. It's in the general fund, um but we segregate it and track it. The actual expenditures and the fund balance separately. So um. This again is our baseline for next year under a moderate. Version of the revenues, uh we, we can accommodate funding the programs that we typically fund out of measure J and still have. Uh, a little bit of money left over for the year and we also are forecasting um, you know, available fund balance here. And measure J, as a reminder, expires in fiscal year twenty three, and I know that's the next item on the agenda that we'll be covering in more detail. And a downgraded revenue assumption for J. Shows that we would be uh have a bit of a shortfall here next year. Um, compared to the downgraded revenues, but we do a- again, have some fund balance that could assist us with funding that. As we um wait out and get more information about what the impact on revenues looks like. Um, and we'll again cover this as a reminder, there are. More than nine full time positions funded by measure J. So I'll just go through quickly the next steps, um get to the feedback we're looking for and then I will be finishing and happy to answer any other questions. So we would be looking for yeah, feedback on or questions about any of the baseline projections or assumptions that we've gone over. Anything that you still need, um or would like to understand of the different versions of the five year forecast that we've included. Or the budget framework that we've talked about. But in particular, we would be looking for any thoughts or concerns that you might have over the balancing. Measures that we've talked about briefly. And as a reminder, those include um vacant positions, including the cops grant. Any decreases or suspensions of um some of the annual contributions that are included in the general fund for these items. Um, the million dollars that we currently have allocated in the general fund reserves. In the current fiscal year, we could elect to. Not make that contribution, leave that million dollars in the general fund reserve and um so that we can. Have a little bit more cushion there and revisit that set aside later as we know more information. Uh, your thoughts on discussion with employee bargaining groups and any questions or concerns about the uh department reduction scenarios that we've gone over. Uh, and then briefly, I'd just say um the spring budget workshop is where we're at right now. We will be coming back the next meeting, the first meeting in May to talk more specifically about measure. App spending plan and capital budget. Second meeting in May would be a more detailed discussion about the. Budget balancing measures and scenarios to get um feedback so that we can provide a proposed budget. At the June second meeting and then ultimate adoption at the June sixteenth. So all of the remaining meetings that we have for this fiscal year. The budget will be um in front of you in each one of those. So. Uh, that's the end of the presentation that I have. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Kim. Uh, by the way, uh. Very nice presentation, such a complicated topic. Uh, it's very clear. It's broken down to parts that even I can understand. Thank you for that. Uh, questions for him?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Rodriguez. A quick question, Kim, on um. On measure F on economic development, remind me how many staff positions that is? I I caught the public safety numbers, but I didn't catch the. Uh, existing staff for economic development. How many positions that is on, under measure F?
Yeah, there's actually like. Parts of a couple of different people, but adds up to about one full time equivalent of a position.
Thank you.
I have a question, Kim. This is Angel Barra.
Go ahead, Angel.
Yes, um, so we're not looking at any furloughs or layoffs, correct?
Uh, no, we haven't included any assumptions related to that. Uh, I think when we talk about, you know, discussions with employee bargaining groups, we would be more concerned about. Or just having input from them or brainstorming about. Uh, what, what different, what help they could potentially provide to help balance the budget. But no, we have not included any. Assumptions or factors for furloughs or layoffs.
Did you put any, any assumptions or factors regarding vacant positions and um attrition?
So we do every year include a a small amount of offset in the budget for assumed vacancies throughout the year. It's about a one percent of the. Yeah, one percent of overall personnel expenditure. So it gets close to three hundred thousand dollars that we assume in the budget every year. We would not spend all of the budgeted expenditures. So yeah, we do assume that there's some level of position savings in addition to.
And so, and also my last question is, when you uh factor in. Um, an employee's um compensation salary. Do you do at the top step?
So it's actually done at. It's very detailed at whatever step they're actually at now and assuming that they would progress through the steps uh throughout the year on their anniversary date. So it's based on um. You know, where where employees are right now. If we have a position that's vacant, we, we budget it at the middle of the salary grade.
Okay, and you, you're obviously looking at this budget and making projections and assumptions based on a two year budget? Or a one year budget?
Uh, we do a one year budget and then the re- the remainder of the years after that are just a forecast.
Okay, because I, I remember um. Previously with the council, we're looking at a year budget.
Yeah, we used to talk about it as a two year budget. We never actually implemented or adopted two years at a time. It was a, a goal that we were working towards and it turns out that it. It just didn't work out for us, so we reverted back to just a actual, one year of an actual budget and calling the remainder of them forecasts.
Okay, so I'm assuming that's off the table then. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, this is uh Tom Stallard.
Yeah, Tom.
I just want to thank Kim and Havis, her colleague, for all the hard work they've done on this. I guess it's a. I struggle to listen and absorb all of it, but I think they've done a great job of making it as clear as possible for us. Uh, having been on the council since two thousand eleven, when we were in the middle of the Great Recession. Uh, I am grateful uh for the wisdom in the past to set aside the money we've set aside. Uh, the twenty percent goal was ambitious at the time, but uh clearly uh we're in that rainy day situation. So I'm, I'm grateful to be able to have the options we have at this time that were built into our, our financial planning. I also really appreciate the fact that we're looking out into the future and seeing what the implications are. Uh, in in future years. Uh, and obviously the fact that problems we face now will be multiplied in the future, just the way it is. So uh, that leaves me to feel that we should take as, as conservative approach as possible fiscally. Uh, so that we maintain our finance, the best financial health we can going forward. And I think there are things we all want to do, but maybe we need to recognize that they're going to have to just pause a bit until we're in a better, till the picture's better. I personally am hopeful that we'll bounce back uh from this. Uh, many people do feel we're in the recession now. But uh I hope that we'll bounce back quickly because this recession was not induced uh by economic factors. It was induced by a health crisis. And so the economic factors that kept us doing so well for so long are basically still present. We'll have to overcome, I think, the fears and co- and lack of confidence in our citizens in terms of trusting institutions, trusting. Uh, places, restaurants and the like, gyms, whatever, and they will return. So that's my, I, I'm optimistic uh for the future. I feel though, uh, at the ti- at this point. Oh, you know, we're in the hole. We don't want to dig it any deeper and we need to be conservative going ahead. So I, I think everything is on the table as the mayor suggested earlier. And uh, I think the staff needs to keep looking and we need to keep considering options, but. I haven't heard any option that I'm not willing to consider in order to maintain our, our stability fiscally. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other comments, council members?
This is Councilmember Fernandez, if I could, Mayor Landsberg.
Please, go ahead.
I just want to thank Kim and everyone who's involved in piecing together this very thorough and sobering uh budget and presentation. Um, definitely helps uh the council keep in perspective, uh, you know, very real um potentially, um, you know. Real um outcomes and forecasts. Um, we've got to be realistic and I think as Councilmember Stallard mentioned, uh, conservative with our. Um, approach moving forward. Um, I'm pretty flexible on the measures that we um explore to uh maintain. Uh, the uh fiscal austerity that we need to uh to um. Properly manage uh the funds that we've been entrusted with, um, to ensure that we best serve the public both now and. Um, you know, five, ten years out. Um, you know, with that, uh, I share the same optimism as, as uh many of my colleagues. Um, I, I think this uh. A health crisis induced uh recession is, is pretty uh different than what we experienced in two thousand eighteen. Uh, and we're seeing that with the way that um individuals are being uh furloughed or laid off. Um, most employers are expecting these kinds of layoffs to be temporary. And um about seventy percent, according to Wall Street Journal, of these furloughs are, are temporary and whereas in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, it was only about twelve percent. So. I, I, I am optimistic uh that uh the economy will speed back up, but you know, with that, we can't ignore the fact that. The way things are right now uh require us to uh act with as much prudence and. Um, conservation and resourcefulness as we can. So uh, that's it for me. Thank you. I loo- and I'm looking forward to uh. Having a um thorough dialogue moving forward the next month. And I'm looking forward to having a thorough dialogue moving forward the next month or so.
Thank you, Councilmember Fernandez. Mr. City Manager, any final comments?
Maybe just add an editorial comment that, you know, I think, you know, clearly this pandemic has kind of shaken the way we go about our daily lives and there will be a ripple effect into our economy that will be lasting. And a lot of the fiscal models and the tax structures that we've relied on over the years, I think are going to have to be rethought. You know, I think Woodland is in a unique position in that its economy is squarely founded on food. And I'm sure another thing that this pandemic has proved to us is that, you know, food is going to be essential and essential service. So we're very fortunate, I believe, to be in an economic environment where our economy is in that that space. And so I think, you know, as the models have told us even up to date, we've got a structural deficit that's looming out there. And while this pandemic has accentuated that fact, you know, I think it becomes even more incumbent upon us to identify innovative and more creative ways to diversify our economy and be proactive to position this community to be relevant and be vibrant in the future. So look forward to working with council and the staff to figure out how that translates here to Woodland. But appreciate the feedback. And as you can see, we are very fortunate to have a great fiscal team. Kim and Havus have done a tremendous job positioning us to, you know, have a good firm understanding of our fiscal situation and look forward to working with them and the council to deliver a balanced budget and position us for solvency moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Let's go to take us to item 10.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the last item on the agenda and this is consideration of the measure J rule. As the council recalls, earlier this year, you did request to bring back to the council for consideration a discussion about how to position the measure J for the ballot this November. The community last supported the measure J, which was really a reauthorization of a prior quarter cent sales tax measure in 2014. The current measure J will expire in 2022. So in order to position the city to have that measure not lapse, we need to have that measure renewed in November of this year. Currently, the measure J sales tax quarter cent measure generates just under $3 million for the city. Those $3 million go specifically to support youth-related activities in this community. The measure J accompanied the ballot back in 2014 with four advisory measures. Those advisory measures included support for teen programming and youth activities. Also, a separate measure asked the voters to support use of a certain percentage of the funds from measure J to go towards literacy and expanded programming at the library. There was another measure that asked for community input and feedback on crime prevention investments primarily in our youth, gang intervention strategies. And then lastly, the last measure did request community interest and support. We're using some of the funds, 5% towards utility ratepayer assistance as we were going through a very acute period of increasing the rates to help pay for the capital facilities and water project. So before the council this evening is initial consideration for how to approach the measure J renewal. City Clerk will be pulling up a PowerPoint slide here for me real quick. As I mentioned, measure J is a quarter cent sales tax, which translates to about just under 3 million currently. It was an eight-year measure that expires in 2022. On it, you can go to the third slide. And accompanying the measure were the four advisory measures. Specifically, the percentages break down here with 60% towards youth and teen programming, 20% towards the library, 15 towards crime prevention and at-risk youth, and then 5% towards utility ratepayer assistance. Each of these advisory measures passed with at least 60-plus percent, with the exception of the utility ratepayer assistance, which was just around 50%, but all received strong support from the community. Next slide. So this slide here demonstrates how the current allocation of measure J funding is distributed throughout an annual budget. Currently, we've got $475,000, which go towards general recreation programming, of which 1.75 full-time employees are hired to deliver those programs. We do have a middle school program that we contribute $225,000 annually. We also have the aquatics program, which is supported with measure J, $270,000 there. The rec van, rec to go, is $104,000 and three-quarter part-time staff that supports that program. We also have various summer camps, $160,000 go to provide summer camps to youth here in the community. And then the Youth Advisory Academy has a small contribution of $5,000, bringing us to about 1.2 million that go into the youth programming in the community. The library receives $600,000 a year that goes to provide for library programming and services, including the new maker spaces there. There are three full-time staff members that provide those program services at the library. And then for public safety, we have crime prevention staff. $127,000 goes to provide a staff member to engage with crime prevention at the high school campuses. We also have at potential youth program. So we've got one staff member plus additional consultant services that go to provide and engage with youth that are in the at potential category within our community. And then lastly, the great program, which provides educational and outreach to our middle school students to get them to pursue alternative activities as opposed to pursuing gang activities. And then lastly, annually, the utility ratepayer assistance received a contribution of $250,000 per year, initially was undersubscribed, but currently is almost 100% tapped out by the time we get through the first quarter of fiscal year. All right, next slide. So measure J fund balance. We've maintained the measure J funding in a separate reserve accounts and then allocate those funds to ensure that they don't get intermingled with our general fund. In addition to the programming that I just summarized, we have invested measure J funds to support some capital projects. The initial measure J estimates have been exceeded largely due to increased performance of our sales tax in the community. So with some of those additional revenues, the council has allocated some capital investments to the Hittleson Pool demolition as well as the installation of the replacement park at that site. The council has also allocated 1.5 million to the future second pool complex, of which there is currently 1.25 million remaining in fund balance. The other quarter of a million dollars went to pay for the feasibility study and preliminary planning for the pool. And then the council has also allocated some seed funding towards sports park phase two of $1 million that would go to match private youth program organizations in the community to develop skate park, the tennis complex, as well as soccer fields and softball fields at the sports park. And then lastly, there's about a half a million dollars currently available and projected after this fiscal year, which can also be a buffer for us should the implementation of the extension measure lapse and there be a gap. So we're fortunate to have a little bit of a cushion there should need to go back to the voters as necessary in a couple of years. Next slide. So one of the questions for the council to provide some direction on when we come back is how to structure the advisory measures. I think it's staff's recommendation that if we are to put the measure J renewal on the ballot, that it also accompany advisory measures similar to the voters' approval back in 2014. So the council could provide some direction relative to how those advisory measures would break up the percentage to the community. And currently, again, the 60% goes to youth, 20% to library, 15 to crime prevention, and 5% to utility assistance. So the council could modify those percentages slightly. So here's two scenarios, which would modify an increase to the library services to 25% from 20, taking 5% out of the youth and then taking another 5% out of the youth and adding it to crime prevention. Additionally, it might be another option for the council simply to take 5% out of the youth and add it to the library to allow expanded programming there primarily for the demand that's needed at the square one maker space. All right, next slide. So future considerations, you know, utility assistance program. If it were to be replaced, would and have zero allocation, would need to be either absorbed by the general fund or go away entirely. So our recommendation to retain that 5% utility ratepayer assistance within the measure J and include that as an advisory measure. Plus, operations of the new pool is not currently contemplated in measure J. As you can see here, the estimated annual maintenance and operation and programming for the pool would cost about $800,000 a year. With the current projections, the quarter cent sales tax could not continue to fund the current programming and absorb the additional pool maintenance responsibilities. So that's currently not within the forecast. But just do we want to highlight that if measure J does pass, it doesn't necessarily guarantee that we have the funding in place to support the second pool programming maintenance. Next slide. So tonight's discussion is really an introduction to the topic to provide from council to staff recommendations on how you would like us to come back at the May meeting with draft ballot language to frame the measures that would accompany the measure J renewal. We'd also like to receive the council input and feedback on the duration of the renewal measure. The council has an option for whether to simply put it back on for an additional eight years, which was the current measures term, or to potentially shorten or expand that timeframe. Apparently, if the measure were to be back on for eight years, it would land, however, within the same year of renewal as the current measure F. So the council may want to consider staggering that so the voters aren't faced with consideration of both the half-cent measure F renewal and measure J at that time. In order for us to position the measure J renewal for the November election, we will need to have council adopt a final resolution about language in June of this year so we can get it to the county to include within the elections. So with that, I might turn it back over to the council for input and feedback that we can then use to bring back a recommendation for ballot language in May.
Thank you, City Manager. Any questions for the manager regarding item 10?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I want to thank again Ken Hyde for that report. I hope, particularly after the budget we've just listened to, that people recognize a lot of things that have become important to us in Woodland are funded by measure J. Personally, I'm pretty happy with the existing percentages. But, you know, I could perhaps be influenced one way or another to do a modest change. But I think we have to remember that measure J was adopted initially to provide, to bring back to Woodland, many services related to youth that had been taken away in the Great Recession. And the reason we go to those things, like the library, like our community services programs, like law enforcement involvement with youth, which is essentially what you see in measure J, is because those are discretionary things. Most things we do have little discretion with them. So this measure was intended to bring back those things that made us a more whole community. While we still have present problems with gangs and other issues of that sort, I think they could be much worse were they not for the investment we have made over these past few years. So I think we have to work really hard to get this back. I'm willing to go in November. I think it's a good idea. I can tell my present colleagues that it was the council itself that basically provided the leadership to get measure J adopted. And we were joined by our friends on the library board and other parts of the community that recognized the importance of investing in youth. So I don't want in any way to emphasize the youth aspect of this. I think that's resonated with the voters. Last time, I trust it will resonate with them again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Any other member have a comment or a question?
Mayor Landsberg, this is Councilmember Rodriguez. I'm going to go ahead and say, as I've supported in the past, you know, of course, getting measure J back on on the ballot for November 2020. I appreciate the thorough report here. And I would like to, you know, of course, support youth programming and also feel that we need to emphasize in putting more money into our library programs because they do contribute to that to that effort, especially nowadays that we see this pandemic forcing folks to stay indoors, that we need to push for more activities that can promote literacy at home and other educational programs that students and youth have to have to do online. So I think I would like to see an increase there to the library of at least that 5%. But I also feel that our public safety departments contribute a lot to this youth programming. And while I was considering a 55, 25, 15, 5% in that order, I feel that we need to, like I said, give a little more to the library, 5%. And I'd be open to also doing 20% to public safety. As like I said, both I feel that both the library programs and our public safety contribute to to youth programming and support groups. So I would like to see a 50, 25, 20, and 5% in that in that order respectively for this effort. Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Any other council member have a question or a comment on this item?
Councilmember Barajas?
Please.
Yeah, I'd like to study it a little bit further. I'm going to be able to see what the results were regarding participation in some of these services that we've provided, what's effective, what's not effective, have information that's evidence-based, and then be able to adjust the percentages or not. Maybe putting together a subcommittee and just being able to to kind of vet that and then bring it back to the council. That's just a thought. I would love to be in support of measure J and put it on the ballot. And, you know, I am going to be in support of it and I'm going to campaign to very hard to approve it. So whatever council colleagues want to decide moving forward, I'll be in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barajas. Any other comment from council member?
Mayor Landsberg, Councilmember Fernandez. Generally speaking, also in favor of moving forward with putting this on the November ballot. I'm fine with the the current percentages, how they're allocated, how funds are allocated to these different purposes. Me being who I am, I would like to see a little bit more guidance in the language that's on the ballot with regards to the supervision of how funds are utilized.
Because, you know, there's some wonderful people in this town and wonderful organizations doing wonderful things for youth. But I think if the city's going to support this going forward, then we also need to be supportive of a uniform and collaborative effort citywide, you know, with our partnerships with the school district and the community college and all the other nonprofits and private individuals that have, you know, skin in the youth game. And so I would like to see some sort of advisory committee that's associated or at least has the ability to make recommendations to the council with regards to how some of these fundings, these funds are allocated once they've been allocated to the respective silos. Because, you know, they're essentially, the funds are going to silos and there isn't, I think, a body to bring everything together. And I think we need to pull from the subject matter experts that we have at our school district and at our community college to help us ensure that the programming that the city's supporting is aligned with the programming that is being done in our school district and that's being done out in our community by some of these nonprofits. So generally, again, summarize, I'm fine with things as they are and pushing forward. I would like to see a mandate for these funds to compel the city and its partners to ensure that there's uniformity and unison moving forward with spending these funds. And I know that might kind of handcuff the city in some regard. But I think it would be wise for us to do this because it would ensure that we're like doing things that are aligned with what everyone else is doing in the community. And we can go step by step with creating innovative and productive programs for our youth. I just, I think it would benefit the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fernandez. Mr. Hyde, my comment is as follows. I think that I make no bones about it, the library percentage needs to be increased. Certainly, they deal with youth. Maybe a different category of youth than the other programs do. Nonetheless, their kids, they too deserve a measure of these funds. I'm advocating for an increase for the library to at least 25%. I'd love to see it be even more. I understand the need in the other categories. As to Councilmember Barajas's comment, I wish there was a way to measure some of these successes and maybe not successes. But I'm not sure that we have a method of doing that in a very short period of time. Mr. Hyde, if you can do that before we need to get it out to the county, let's do it. You can't measure that before the deadline. We'll have to do it in some other fashion, maybe next time. I agree with the councilman that, you know, you need to measure successes where the best money should be going to. How do you measure if somebody hasn't joined a gang? I mean, can we really do that? I'm thinking that we can. I think that the people that work those programs tell us how many kids have avoided gang membership because of the intervention these programs have given them. So certainly, if we had a method to do that in the next few weeks, let's do it. If we can't, let's get this thing on the ballot for November. That's my comment. Thank you very much. Any other comments from a member?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Rodriguez. If I may add, if we can make a subcommittee happen within the timeframe allocated, I would support that. And I would go with what my colleagues suggest, like I said, if we have the time to do that. And finally, I want to point out that, you know, we've seen an increase in crime and gang activity. And so a lot of need for support to the library. So I feel that we should see somewhat of a change in how we allocate this money. At the end of the day, like I said, if we can make a subcommittee happen, sure thing. If not, happy to continue the conversation with my colleagues. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hyde, can you get back to us in the next two weeks? If that's something that can be done, because if so, then we should probably look at a subcommittee to do that, to make sure this measure moves forward as we've discussed.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so I think what I would recommend is at the next council meeting, we'll be presenting to the council the spending plan for next year for both Measure F and Measure J. And maybe as part of that presentation, we can build in more information regarding participation rates in the programs that we are providing through Measure J, as well as some of the outcomes that we're seeing that are more anecdotal. So happy to build that into the presentation on the May 5 meeting. And that will be sufficient for the council. And if not, council subcommittee can be appointed at that time to work with us with any fine tuning based on that.
I also think that the voters need to want to know this too. I agree with the councilman that the measurements are key, getting the public to continue to support this tax. We want the public to support the tax. They're going to want to know what have we received for this extra tax. So I think it's incumbent upon us and staff to get that information together, whether it's by some committee or some other fashion. I think the voters deserve to have this information.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Rodriguez. And, you know, and along with that, it's important to emphasize that this is a continuation, right, of the tax. That way, the community, you know, feels more comfortable that this wouldn't be an increase, but more a continuation.
Right. Thank you. Anything further on this? Item number 10? We don't need a motion. Is that correct or just direction?
Correct. I think the feedback you provided this evening is very helpful and productive. So we will come back on May 5, probably continue this conversation and then ultimately put together some recommended ballot language for the council to weigh in specifically on.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of the calendar. Thank you, council members. Good meeting. Appreciate all of you attending. Thanks for staff for attending. I do wish to adjourn this meeting in the memory of longtime Woodland resident Mary Holmes. Mary was the wife of my friend Roy Holmes. Roy and Mary would have been married for 72 years this year, passed away just the other day. This meeting is her memory. Have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.